I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's put a logo, please.
Lester.
Here.
Tim Chen.
Here.
Tom Tha.
Here.
Moody.
Here.
Dee Cameron.
Here.
Forum Brother.
Okay, prior to starting this meeting, I feel like we'll take a moment to have a moment of silence for Rebecca Harris, who passed away last Thursday morning after a long battle with cancer. Becky was a champion for Boeing City whenever asked to help. Becky almost said yes. She was instrumental in the renovation of the park pavilion. Served years as a market manager for the Boeing City's partners' market. And as her daughter-in-law said, she was relentless in building and fostering relationships for her community. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by virtue of non-concursial items. They will be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or publicly asked that any items from the consent agenda be moved and placed as the last items under due business to receive full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. Any within the audience? Any?
It wasn't clear after the last meeting how we were going to work together or who was going to actually come up with suggestions for the regulations on the SDRs. Can we go back again to see some of who was going to be doing that?
Maybe a citizen's comment, can you bring that up? Share with us a question.
That should be, that's right.
Okay.
Well, these minutes were published before we had our short-term meeting last night. So they're definitely separate. I'm sure they're available, they're posted on the website. They may be my manager. But if not, how they will be? Anyone else on the consent? Commissioners? A right motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All the neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. If we have a, the audience wants to address the commissions. Any? Please move the podium at State of A and address them for limited to five minutes.
My first question, yes, there. So we've got those minutes and you know, I just, it wasn't clear to me who was going to be charged to make the recommendation to bring for the next meeting. Both of them. Or if it's just a follow-up. And then, I know that for a few months now, we've been told if we didn't get the EDA grant, it was a moot point of Marina expansion. We did not get the EDA grant. So are we dropping the expansion plans right now and fixing up what we have?
We have Maria, I'm going to generate them later and I would assume that it would be possible to move into discussion about that.
Right, and then the other thing is, I'm interested to know when you've done any license boardings of the soil under the lake where you're planning on expanding. Did you get the span or even? Because there are all kinds of poisons that were in what was dumped into the lake by the TNR. And by the lover mills. And I've been looking at articles and I said, probably the TNRs are the single most dangerous polluted waters. And, but also the pulp mills put dioxins and benzene into the water and it was very toxic to the aquatic layer. And I also looked up chemicals from the TNR and made improvements that I don't know about. Hexavalent, probium salts, arsenic, benzene, methylhyd, butyl, acetate, ethanol, toline, and acetone. And I would think before you reconsidered anything that would disturb those lake bottoms, you'd make sure you're not going to be dredging up into that stuff because that would be devastating for the lake. And some of these are pines crossing for people, that's all.
Kenny, could you clarify your question about the short-term rental?
You guys talked about coming back, I think, to the next commission meeting or maybe it was just the short-term.
So hopefully there will be a short-term rental meeting scheduled. That meeting is not scheduled if there's things that happen.
Okay, and that was where you were going to talk about what you might plan.
Randy, if you have any, you or anyone in the audience or anyone can make any suggestion, you just email that to Sam Pearson or anyone else. And it will be posted in the city website as a short-term rental page. Cover page of the city.
And I'm glad you said that because we've got a group that's been working together, working hard to create a public room. I will inform and ask for their questions, their preferences, what happens in the morning, and give them a feeling that they really have the opportunities to speak and be heard. People keep saying you can't fight City Hall. Actually, that's not my purpose. I'd like to work with City Hall so the public can get the things that are their priorities and you won't have any doubts. Because Marina, like you said, has caused all kinds of controversy and most hours of debate. Now we can get the rental grants. So we've got to let and take care of what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else?
Little bit of leisure. My name is Steve Person. I was having a little 437 hot loser. I'm kind of curious about the library, the red building and parking. Sounds like the guy who kind of took the turf before the horse. And wouldn't be able to come in there and taking up those almost 40 spots, a parking. If you guys don't need research around here to see where you're going to put those 40 parks, that parking spots back there. And it says, I don't know if the commission beforehand or this one, if they did it on their own or if the city manager did it, who doesn't go ahead and get away with this? Putting that bigger grill in that one spot on the angle. Because it seemed like they added, they added on, they have to come in front of the boards, not just do it on their own. They had city manager. It seemed like you got to know. Thompson, he didn't do it. Better group he had, you know, commission beforehand. And George, I mean, like I see no one's knocking. At the last meeting, we wouldn't see what I was talking about. The city manager didn't do more of it than press a board. But I was kind of curious, who gave you permission to do it? Because none of you guys did. Said it on its own page, coming up for the next meeting, whether they can keep your seven spots. What's to stop them from adding more on? If you didn't stop them from putting the grill on, right?
Well, I can try to answer your question. There was a commission resolution asked by the previous commission, give the city manager, when we were in COVID, the opportunity to work with businesses to try to address their needs and was went through 2021 and came back to the city commission. The city commission decided to allow it to continue until they even met. And that's where we are now.
And that was the seven spots. I'm saying they had to grill everything afterwards. After they'd already had the seven spots, I just didn't know about how they added on. Or if they needed to move. Their city manager needed to move. But they did it on their own. There was too much involved at next meeting that was, I think, supposed to.
It's a, it's a judgmental decision.
The last one is curious. But like, also the parking spots there, does anybody check out where they could put 40 other spots in this town, closer downtown than today? Is that kind of purpose or course? You know, I'm staying in the library at once. Trying to sell our red bill or whatever. But they got you guys involved in giving them a ton of property to do. So I'm just kind of curious. That's what I.
Thank you. Anyone else? Eddie?
Hi, I'm Steven Richards. I'm 26th and Lincoln Street. Um, there's a little info for that. Um, I, I'm also interested to know when there were sort of soil boardings on last. There was a task review article just recently about Marina capacity and a picture of one Marina and it says that we have issues with our, any potential threat. Now that may be a moot point now, with what is going, but there is concern about that. Um, also with the SDRs, I guess I'm asking for a specific question. Yes, we've had lots of opportunity for input, we can continue perhaps to have input. But it wasn't clear to me at the end of the meetings, who had the ball for writing the draft? I anticipate, maybe wrongly, that the next meeting of an SDR, there's going to be a draft of some sort of the whole. So my question is, who has that ball? Is it the staff or is it?
Uh, it would be the city staff that's taking the input from the city commissioners and you feed that information to our city planner who will have a draft of some sort possibly. We're kind of entering down a trail with that now before and we're seeing how we can come down it in terms of agreement. Resolution of, of short-term rental.
It's not a test practice, don't get me wrong. I mean, mother cities taking year or two. But it just wasn't asked. It's an honest question. Wasn't clear to me who had the ball when we walked out of here.
And again, if you have input that you'd like to provide to the city staff at the city, please get your understanding of that to the law.
Um, the other question I have has to do with an MEPC website that shows three properties for sale of White City. It's Scott Pearson's telephone number. It's the, what they referred to as the Flatchman Motor Company lot and Remax lot. There's one other that I think is already gone by the way, so it says not for sale, then it says terms negotiable and it has Scott Pearson's email address. My understanding is according to this DDA and their plan, there isn't anything for sale other than what's been recently put up for our queue. I'm stressing that is that why would this be up on a website indicating that it's for sale?
Um, we only have a limited amount of time to discuss this tonight, but it's all part of the redevelopment rate community with MEPC. And if you have some further questions, I would suggest you talk to Scott Pearson and he can clarify exactly what redevelopment rate community program is called.
Okay, so the property is for sale. That's a simple question. Is that property for sale?
It could be.
Thank you.
It is not, but it could be if the redevelopment, if there's something that comes, but did you get any statement?
You're pointing me to talk to Scott about MEPC sort of way. Try to say it very carefully.
Explain the redevelopment rate community program, which says part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Scott, it's a big thing I might have just spoken about, just going off my paper. Oh, that's a little good estimation, I think, of conversation. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on, you have correspondence. We have an email, emails from Checkbook House. I am the state commissioner before Michigan Public Service Commission notice appearing for the electric customers and consumers' energy company, case NOU-20803. We have a letter from the U.S. Economic Development Administration, fiscal year 2021, American Rescue Plan, Act Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Notice of Funding Opportunity of which Boeing City was not awarded. And we have the, under that, 2021 Water Quality Report for the city of Boeing City. Michigan, I have another question.
Here's the report. Um, I went through the report and I'm not a lawyer, I um, but overall synopsis of was the report, clear and bad? Is it?
Good.
Yes. And if the committee would like, Tim's, my assistant, Park Poller's not here, he's on the training today. But if you'd like to have, if you have some questions, you can either ask him directly or you can answer a couple, but two minutes at our next meeting.
And that report was, I know it was published in the task review.
That, if that does come on air. We've had historically good results.
Any others?
We should give. It gave, it gave the rankings and everything and it's much like a, a lot like a warm home.
Okay, moving on, like city managers' report.
Uh, work is continuing to progress well on the north Lake Street Bridge reconstruction. Uh, the sidewalk is pretty much completed. They were putting in the brick caivers this morning. And preparations are underway for the installation of the new handrails. It's hoped that the sidewalk will be open for the weekend and the contractor, once he's done there, it will be moving back to tannery and peninsula beach parks to finalize their work at those locations. After months of waiting for the proper parks to be created and delivered, the long-term restoration of the old city park gazebo is now on our way. Started over a year ago, the effort to keep the gazebo attractive and safe for the public to use stalled while working to get the necessary materials to do the job right. Those materials finally arrived from Woodshop in Canada where they were custom crafted using hard-to-find lumber. The contractor, Houdick Construction, picked up the material from our lumber on Monday and took them to Old City Bar. Uh, work then began in earnest with old and weakened parts of the gazebo being removed. They moved for the new ones. Some of the new ones have already been installed. Uh, the gazebo had been temporarily encased in plastic to allow the work to proceed better despite what the weather might do. And by the end of June, we hope that the restored and beautiful gazebo should be unwrapped and again available for moment use. Since our last meeting, the Veterans Memorial Committee had the previously approved fence installed and replaced failed forest concrete in the parking lot area south of the memorial. They plan to add a new secondary arch at the wide gap at the northwest corner of the fences. They'll also be installing p-stone under the fence in the coming months to limit wood regrowth below it. Uh, we, interviews were completed for four applicants for our regular first position last week. Reference and other background reviews are currently underway and I anticipate having a recommendation for the commission at our next meeting. Applications for our EMS director's position were due yesterday. Uh, we received three at this point. They will be reviewed to schedule an interview. Uh, that position that we will be accepting applications if somebody still sent one until the position is filled. Kat Eber of our front office has informed us of her intention to retire from the city on Friday, June 3rd, after 18 years of working for, for us. She has done an excellent job and we'll miss her. Uh, we have advertised a position. We're accepting applications through this coming Monday, May 16th. Thanks, God, for all of you. Cassidy Moody has been promoted, uh, also in our front office, to deputy city clerk by city clerk treasurer Jessica Pearl and was sworn into that position last week. She has been certified by the state to work on elections, including her first one last week. We offer her our professional. As provided by city ordinance, I've reappointed Ms. Jason to the housing commission for a term ending January 1st, 2027. And appointed Reverend Gerald Cook to fill a vacancy that was created by the reservation of Sarah Peterholm for a term ending January 1st, 2025. Reminder that our spirit of collection continues through May 23rd and our residential rovers collection program is scheduled not this coming Saturday, but on Saturday, May 21st. Uh, the Shoppers Dock and Fishing Pier are expected to be returned to the normal summer positions this week, weather permitting. And our arena is scheduled to open for the season on Sunday, the 15th this coming year. Construction on the new 48 by 48 foot hangar at, uh, location D9 that was approved earlier by the city commission in February is set to begin next Monday, 16th, with excavation at the site. Uh, building materials are expected to arrive on about the 26th with construction of the actual hangar going on about the 31st. And we expect that to be completed in June. Uh, work on the other hangar that was approved by the state commission is expected to take place later this summer. Uh, the loss on Lake Street will be on the planning commission agenda for their meeting on Monday, the 16th for a development plan review. They need to resubmit their plans as previous ones had expired. Work on the Lincoln Street reconstruction project between South Lake and Grant Street, street is scheduled to begin right after Memorial Day, Tuesday, the 31st. Work will be completed on August 26th. Uh, the street will be closed through traffic during most of the construction. We will be holding a public information meeting here in this room on Tuesday, May 17th at 5:30 PM. And plans for that project are available for review here at the lobby. Uh, since our last meeting, Jessica found a grant from the state that if approved would reduce our cost for the table tabulator purchase that was recently approved by $1,500. So we'll be seeing that. As you may have noticed, looking out the window, the fields of green, Woody has been back at work with the support of the Lily Lake Board and is moving forward. Uh, with their efforts on the field adjacent to us here. Additional trees were removed last weekend. Looks like some of the fence line has been removed as well too on the west side. With additional work impacting the field and the funding facilities, uh, he can place in your future as well. Uh, we have been advised that the county had approved two of our park village funding requests that we applied for. Uh, the recent one that we moved to top priority to add, uh, field dirt to the ball field for extended, uh, season income and weather at Lily Park. Again, of that was requested by Field of Green Committee, that was approved, as was the request to add additional city and benches around the correct pick-up hall of courts. Um, we were also advised that Consumers Energy has another grant opportunity specified here in the memo to the commissioners. I accepted information on that earlier. Uh, Consumers Energy will be giving out grants totally, uh, $500,000 across the state. They are requesting letters of intent by, uh, not this Friday, but next Friday, the 20th. It's a two-step process. He said the letter of intent, if they accept it, you can apply. Boards can go up for $250,000 and if they're at max, there'd be two of those. Uh, so it's very competitive across the state and they're looking for uh, projects that would focus on neighborhood revitalization or earth state culture priorities. Last year, the main street applied for funding for the theater, but was not successful. They may wish to do that again. Uh, I haven't asked if support for helping projects like the loss on Lake Street was possible and the consumers responded that it's good. So that communities level of light is not a factor. So the commission already made us some ideas on applications. We would have to get a letter in by the 20th if you wish to apply. Uh, and just kind of following up on some of the discussion earlier, we'll rehearse our next short-term rental meeting date. We're currently hitting around two dates, Wednesday, June 8th and Tuesday, June 21st. And the commissioners have some feedback on that. They want to give me towards the end of the meeting. I'll be trying to gather that and summarize that and see where we're at. And by looking out the window, you can see that the town is gearing up for what looks to be a very warm mushroom festival this weekend. So back to the beginning of the business season. So if you have questions on these or additional items, I'd be glad to try to address.
Yeah, I, I have a few. Uh, so back to the gazebo.
Yes.
Uh, so we have everything in it now. I, I guess I'm, are, are we going to, are we going to try hard and put a pressure and get this done? I, I mean, there's been a lot of, a lot of kicking can and, you know, some of it was, you know, because of the, uh, the product, but there was a lot of early on. Uh, and, and for 45 days, I, I'm just, I'm confused at needing all that time. I, I would rather hold it to a firm eight, you know? It's just gotten egregious, I guess.
Only when I can to, uh, there isn't any provision in the contract for a specific date of completion, so. I think Bob is, uh, he'd like to get it done sooner rather than later as well too.
Yeah, we heard that a lot about the rear row. That took a lot longer than what I needed to. Uh, I, continuing on, can I ask another question? Uh, one's, one's a clarification, uh, mainly for, um, wonderful, uh, um, Facebook and correspondence and just to, you know, inform, you know, Mike talked about the, uh, new hangar up at the airport, you know, those are, those don't cost the city, I mean, those are private hangars that get built and then they get reverted over to the city over time. So it's a win-win-win and, uh, you know, there's, there's, that's a misnomer that, you know, the, uh, the city, much like the marina, that the city is only looking out for the rich people, for the big voters and the people with their kids and stuff. Think that needed to be said. Um, my question, maybe this goes to Scott, so are they changing anything on the laws on Lake Street? Or the approval just ended, that, you know, died and now they have to come back for reapproval?
To best the, um, development plan approval, they need to obtain a zoning permit. So that, uh, who, that who looks higher.
Okay.
Um, the building, um, is exactly the same size and location and the street and parking improvements are exactly the same. Because here there are some interior, uh, modifications. Uh, less commercial space, more
orbital.
More, uh.
Residential. Yes, sure.
Five thirty and one thirty, okay.
Well, I had a question about, oh, the question about the, uh, uh, the grant, the Jordan Fittipal about a grant. Um, is that something that we could look to do for, uh, the house at the bottom of Main Street? I know we're already working with, you know, uh, the land man and Charlotte Tommy on Christmas House, but, uh, you know, the one at the bottom of Main Street, you know, we've talked a little bit, I, I think that it definitely could be, you know, we could turn that into a win-win, you know, do a, do a rehab and, uh, you know, put it in the, uh, uh, housing commission or, or sell it outright, do, do whatever whatever would be right to, well, sell it outright with restrictions, much like what would happen with Christmas House.
So with regards to the two hundred, the consumers grant, and I think that would be hard, hard sell for that particular house in particular. They're looking for something more of a community impact from the materials that I reviewed, so that it's gonna have a larger, uh, impact on the community, and I think the one house will be. I do know, just following up with regards to that, based on the conversations that I've seen going back and forth with Steve Schell and, uh, they're talking about seeing if there's some way to incorporate, uh, the gray house at the bottom of Main Street with regards to the current projects that they're looking to do. Incorporate that, so I think that'll come back to the commission at the very latest when they talk about that, uh, you have to consider the problem with the plan. I think they're looking to bring it down back at our, to our first meeting issue. Okay, I think it's not a fault, I'm not sure.
Uh, and the only other question I have is Tuesday, the twenty-first, I'm not looking at calendar, but is that a regular morning for the SDRs? The question was, do you need Wednesday or Tuesday, the twenty-first? No, no, okay.
I tried to pick dates over the meetings.
Yeah, that's all, that's all.
Uh, what about that grant, regardless there is. Does it have to be a nonprofit? Let's see, it can be, it can be a nonprofit, so it would be eligible to apply as well too.
If anybody has ideas for the grant, uh, consumer grant. Uh, we got two grants from the county, which funded the house. You can receive one for furniture and pavilion and a sound system for the building. Anything else? Moving along, uh, we have reports of officers, board, committee committees. Uh, in the agenda packet were, we were drafted, we were set, our direct draft minutes, April fourteenth. And the airport advisory board draft is April twenty-eighth. Questions? Moving on then, we, uh, move to the whole business, item A, state's parking request which is revised from a previous meeting.
I'm submitting a revised proposal to those table from the April twelfth city mission meeting. And submitting a revised sketch of the outdoor area. This revised proposal is just concerns from the April meeting and is extended in the first proposal with the following modifications. He revised plans to reduce parking spaces from seven to four. Parking lot areas where he uses the N L C C whiskey barrels, build the stand place one foot forward stakes from the end of parking space with a decorative thick rope. The low bearer profile verified M L C C around the grass, the front states, uh, additional seating. Mike, you can pull up. But, uh, after talking with the police chief, we may want to, uh, increase those barriers, it was called a Jersey barrier. Kind of a, 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 a polyurethane barrier of the sand or water. Uh, that's a commission discussion there, uh, spits, so the parking lot basically takes as far as action on the major street or water street. Multiple locations, park around six, three kitchen. I did collect some additional signatures, local businesses and support. I think I get it, it was all right.
Yeah, it's in the fact.
So, uh, using space to enhance outdoor dining experience is an asset the city should be encouraged. Writes all the features of visitors, yeah, to enjoy outside dining, probably immersed in all that points it against the offer. State desk in addition to parking space, it should not choose exclusive space, uh, we have all hospitality businesses that are in these, like, outdoor space. Can approach the city commission and submit proposal to convert the city own outdoor space to a library. Outdoor experience to help support the vibrant downtown Point City atmosphere. Stroll streets is a prime example of the nature of outdoor atmosphere Point City has to offer. These proposals should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and the city commission sees that it would be enhancement to the overall experience of the tourism and local life. Mission staff or not that based on their own needs, or how they see it fit. The Point City has just a dozen, just I have a dozen excellent places to drink for downtown Point City. The year around population about three thousand eight hundred people. Proposals similar to this, Point is a highly desired destination for locals and visitors alike. In order to, uh, party, I have a question about insurances and cities liable, I, 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 my insurance company, they give you a quick, uh, couple, couple sentences here, uh, as you, uh, this, this is a court case, when, as you and I agree to discuss your insurance carrier and our agency would be able to comply with any reasonable terms that the city would set forth in our agreement for station, continue utilizing parking spaces in the city lot next to your building. Down in the city, the most request would be added onto the general liability policy as additional insurer and certificate holders which would allow the city covered under your insurance policy. These practices are ready and great, place for many businesses, or restaurants, such as, retailer places table for cheers outside for customer, which resides on municipal property such as the sidewalk. Based on my understanding of the current request of parking spaces, I would imagine the city would be satisfied with similar arrangements. In addition to that, is known that as your insurance advisor in the, and an officer applying in the area, chamber of commerce kind of full support of your request of this part of the city, parking up, the Jason's business is expected to trend, start of the court case. And that's, uh, basically what I got.
Okay, Mike, did you want to fill in with some parts of your memo?
Well, I'll address the, the one that he, uh, just mentioned, uh, with various insurance. Uh, that was only questions that we should ask at the last meeting, so I can reach out to our insurance provider or the agent, Paul Wilson, the municipal writers commission, and he basically said, he was fine with the, uh, request uh, from an insurance standpoint, provided that they did, uh, add us as an additional insurer, just as, uh, like, red letters for to explain, so from their perspective, uh, that addressed the concern. Um, going back to, uh, the original memo with regards to it, um, it talks about, uh, Mike meeting with myself and, uh, Main Street executive director to talk about various alternatives. Mike ultimately came up with the one that was aimed to the commission. Um, he talked about that as well, so I have a bunch of details on that. Uh, he is proposing to continue, he is continuing to propose paying a hundred and four dollars per month for parking space during this period. Um, I did see additional input from groups with regards to this matter. Uh, in addition to our insurance carrier, Chamber of Commerce, we provided a letter of support at the last meeting on this topic, uh, still continues to, uh, support the request. Uh, the main street board has not taken any formal action regarding, uh, this request and continued to express concerns about consistency throughout the downtown parenting parking spaces available. Uh, the planning department did calculations based on the data that was included in the parking, our most recent parking study. Based on that data, the, this block currently has a total supply of a hundred and ten spaces and a demand of seventy-four, which basically means there was at the time of the parking study, uh, thirty-six additional spaces or more spaces, uh, that be expected to be needed. Scott basically looked at Mike's most recent plan, um, and so removing three or four spaces out of that inventory and, uh, increased demand for parking of twenty-one spaces due to the additional seating of the proposed, the proposed chart changes we provide. And at the end of the day, um, that thirty-six, uh, space surplus is reduced to ten or eleven. So based on what we're seeing and based on the review from parking study, there would still be excess capacity in that, in that block of ten to twelve spaces if I interpret that correctly. Uh, the police department has indicated they prefer not to see, uh, active parking in the lot that was used for seating, I might kind of refer to possible areas that could be used to make that a safer, uh, issue. Uh, the D P W has indicated that, uh, having parking, uh, having seating in the parking area makes it uh, plumbing and sewer removal more complicated than winter. Uh, again, the timeframe I will look at right now is just from, uh, between now and September thirtieth. Uh, I have not referred back to our city attorney yet, I did hear from our fire department, they were okay with the request as presented. That's the additional information I have to present.
The other, the other change was that rather than, if, if, if we go through September thirtieth, rather than, you were looking at something more specific than your first report. Okay, well, Mike, is there anything else you want to add before we go to the rest of the comments?
No, if you have any questions.
Any questions, the commissioner, throughout the day, for Mike.
Thank you.
So, uh, moving to the, uh, the comments. In five minutes, me. There, is that not eleven ten, Charlotte Street? Uh, as the city and the commission knows, I'm a huge advocate for small businesses and as a regular visitor of state, uh, both myself and my fiance, this is something that I am one hundred percent supportive. I think that any small business in town that we can support in extending their business and continued employment of employees, um, it's, it's just a, a great result for, for the community as a whole, not to mention in busier, um, busier nights like Stroll Streets and such, we often walk there, but I can tell you that all the times that we've driven, we've never had a problem with parking anywhere. Um, and Stakes is always our go-to because I know that there's going to be people that sit outside, so that's something that's been very important to us. Um, there's one other point I want to make, I seem to always forget that last one. Anyway, we're getting it.
Imagine when you're already.
Well, I'm not too far behind. Um, and there's one other thing. I'm sure they'll come to me as soon as I walk away, but before that, I'm complete and, uh, oh, actually, just remember, see, as soon as I start walking away, that's what comes to me. I also want to point out that, I don't know if, if the city is aware or not, but that lift and other share ride services are becoming a thing in the city. So as that continues and share rides, uh, continue to expand, we, you know, the parking concern will continue to decline because people who are traveling from a longer distance and also want a safe ride home after drinking at night are going to be, uh, seeking a shared ride service like the, or Uber. So, uh, I think that that can also help alleviate any parking concerns, uh, above and beyond the eleven potential plus or minus spaces. Thank you. Anyone else? Any?
What one? It was late June, it was this old, several months.
Yes, when we've gone out to Stroll Streets, we kept on parking to be an issue. And I do want to remind you, if you give away some parking area of one business, another business feels like they're not fair share, have you thought about how many parking spots you can give up down there or you cause parking issues? Have you thought about the people who are old like me and make their belongings replaced and can't walk too good right now, having to park two blocks away to try to go along the store stuff, because there's no parking. And now you've got Watchman's parking lot possibly up for sale to the right person who comes into development, so for years we heard parking, parking, parking is a big issue. And then it was the portal housing is that's a big issue, which it still is. But it seems like you get distracted from things. And you move onto something else and you forget that parking is important if you're gonna have a tourist town. And you need to have enough parking, so not just the tourists, the people in town inconveniently parked to do with this. That's all, I just don't want you to stare at the rest and that's no loss.
Thank you. You?
I mean, you can remember the way Eric Chamber of Commerce, uh, if you have a lot of remarkable work, we did discuss it again at a meeting after the commission met, table the issue, uh, I think that obviously the front chamber is here to support our businesses and also work with the city. Um, during COVID, I know we got a lot of, you know, defensive accusations that Mike was doing things out of zone and, and every decision that Mike made checked for myself, we should even T W and we all worked together to try to make it, you know, user-friendly for people, but we still get a lot of calls with the chamber of, you know, is there outdoor seating and is it available and you know, I work right there and I'm part of that. But we still get a lot of calls with the chamber of, you know, is there outdoor seating and is it available and, you know, I work right there in our part of that. Adjacent to Mike, so I know when the parking is like generally, most of those businesses are closed during the day, which is my typically busy time. So I think basically the chamber we're supporting this, we support all, any type of kind of one of our businesses. I think the fact that giving it to every business is not a clear reason to not it. Then our business might not want it and Mike told me asking for this until September twenty, so you're not giving anything away. You're being pro-business, pro-community, trying to see how it works. There might be other businesses that ask it, but I think they may have a case like mine did, you know, we've done a lot of research and put a lot of effort into this. I think all of us are probably, you know, visited states and know what kind of experience it is and what kind of business it is. So I think that deserves the chance to have a try and join us. And that's speaking from the chamber as a person, when I first came to point, I was like, let's do it, we can, let's work together to make things work. So I think that's how we kind of think about, you know, where we're working, you know, to try to make it work. Park at Myers, walk further than anywhere and downtown, we didn't invite our kind of busy day, so I think that would solve the commission's serious needs. Thank you.
Good evening, Derek Chamber. I think I think we're six, the beverage director there and there's a couple of things to consider. We talked about last time, look at my other comments, precedent is super important and I just want to be ready that state or any business that doesn't. Anyhow, say China, we're not looking to re-implement the will or change something immediately. These are things to be considered and it can be in a trial, so we can make better options available and decide if it does work or it doesn't, it hasn't worked in the past and. I think what everybody's been talking about, we talked a little bit about last time as well, is creating that vibrancy in the town. I mean, yes, parking is important, but we're talking about four spots that consider vibrancy of families and people collecting, gathering. And I don't believe that four cars can replace that to a city, so that's just my personal opinion. So I'm just up here, based on my position and what I do, I would urge you, I respect the urge to to consider the urgency of the matter from an operational standpoint only. Making a vote on saying whether we can or cannot do this or saying let's revisit this in September and see how we did. Is going to be, has a huge impact on the next three, two to five weeks of our operations for this business. You can imagine trying to set up everything that needs to necessitate this additional space and this additional. Having the idea to the ability to plan even for a week or two, considering POS challenges, staffing challenges, everything else that has to happen. Safety standards, all of this, do not give us a path forward for the next three months or not, or. I just would urge you to consider that aspect. Yes, that's it, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. There's a couple of people, Mike.
I'm Augie Gilhard, I'm the owner of the Mustard Distilling at Shorewood Street and. At the risk of sounding like an echo chamber, I'd like to reiterate to the points that I think there's overwhelming support from the community from business owners and all of the citizenry. I think it's dangerous to. Look at this as a proposal, we say giving away spaces, at least the spaces at a fair rate. And I think the biggest concern I've heard is that it sets a dangerous precedent. I think it says a wonderful precedent that if someone comes forth with a well-thought-out, reasonable and fair proposal. That the city commission can take a look at it with an open mind and I think that's a good look to the city. And I encourage you to listen to the comments that have been made. I think a move like this absolutely bolsters state's business throughout the summer, helps them thrive. But also normally helps them survive in winter. And it can be a long government, there in the states is a major employer of the state, I think they provide reasonable standard of living for the larger staff. And I think the goal of the city commission, the mission statement is that people are alive, who are here. Duty to provide responsible governance, so everyone can enjoy the benefits of living and working and playing in toy city. And I think the benefits of accepting a proposal like this far outweigh the. Small risks of liability and loss of months now or. But I will readily support it and I encourage the commission to do so too. Like Derek said, I think there's been plenty of input from either side and. There's no sense of urgency that this matter needs to be settled, so that. Further proposals can be brought forth from similar business owners.
My bill chair, I have forced way, which I have not, I have lived in the city. And I'm embarrassed to say that I was going to come here, make my comments, my guests earlier until I read the agenda that this was on. My comments are this, I have a lot of, I guess now previous commission, but the commission, if you operate as a commission and that kind of here screw up. For creating the opportunity for additional parking, whether it be curbside pickup for all of our restaurants during COVID. And I was sat at, I was at States on Saturday when, that's kind of a beer event for the second year or so. And while going there, I was, I'm just reflecting on the concept that, you know, there are additional. They've taken some parking spots and made places for eating, you know. And and so I want to be able to come here and say, you know, well, I don't, you know, for doing that. Also, I think important is the fact that the auction that took place at States over the last two years. Is a benefit for Mike's and States who for a wrench program that stayed placed on sunny very. We don't have a lot of, we started at the time, businesses were struggling and restaurants were struggling trying to get. You know, people to be able to work and then also be able to, you know, put out to their patrons. And then kind of the last thing you check with this, but during the course of the auction, they set up the opportunity for people who are sitting outside. People looking through the window to figure out whether or not somebody was bidding on a horse or not, and so. I was, I would certainly support, you know, I think it sounds like there's been some conversation taking place and requests have been reduced to what originally was requested. And I am one who I think I've been blessed with relatively good health, so I took it with me, sure, when we go to some places she wants to probably actually get from. Where I'm on part to, you know, to the storefront, but so I didn't like it, I don't like a lot.
It's important that we all stay open-minded and. Prisism on everything that happens in our own town. And I think this project will be open-minded and testing waters and maybe other restaurants will a lot of policy and it's not a bad thing. You know, outside seating is is amazing, I enjoy it. But I think we'd have a stipulation under that Mike goes on Shorewood Street September and we have a Olympic City Block Party. So as long as Mike's open and fluid, I think, do that. Thank you.
The depot building. I'm sorry, Sandy, Sandy, for trip five point six East Lincoln Street. To be able to, we weren't here, wow, ten years ago when the other building was a restaurant and the depot building was off. Because it was all set to go, now it's kind of. And when we bought the depot building, it was those four walls and over time we've been there. It's from, it's starting to move outside, so I'm not sure how that happened, but. I would thought your business plan originally stuck in the compartment of the covers inside. And that's what you need to make it or not, I'm bad. Now, I had to, looking to right away, you're reading. Shorewood Streets and I believe this plan now includes completely amplifying it for the duration. I know that Bobbies would love to stay up, dedicate parking spots up front and they'd like to put tables out. And it's only side side for the same, I'm pretty sure ways of order, but it's awesome to sit outside, it's nice, it really is. Unless you're planning on turning Main Street into a desperate ballpark, I'm not sure how you can rationalize this. I personally don't think a hundred and four dollars a month rent is even something we're talking about. So we got DPW against it, we got Main Street against it, we have police, not particularly like we did. And we're talking about giving a great unfair advantage to one business. And it sounds like it could evolve in some return. So given that. Sound the spaces and be done with it. Make my medium sound spaces, you know, you can do whatever you need to do to meet the safety standards and. Solve the liability, because I think it's precedent, put the finger on the scale, there's twelve years, which is odd so, but. That's what I have to put one in, so that's my, that's my take on it.
Anyone else? Good evening, Mike's Tom Parker, who lives at Shorewood Street. I'd like to speak and support the state's proposal. First, I think number one, it's, this has been in place for two years, so Mike's not asking for anything new. In fact, he's asking for a reduction and just to continue to help the business thrive and provide service. It's been accident free, as far as I can understand, I don't know that there have been any issues in the parking lot. Certain liabilities been addressed, which is good. And then, you know, as far as parking, I think parking is certainly something that continues to be discussed. But as the commission, you know, we make decisions to utilize parking spots in streets. Many times through the summer for various events to lock up whole streets, to lock up certain parking spots. Shorewood Streets, you know, has an impact on parking as well, but the overall benefit for the city and for. Citizens and for the people who come visit our town. You've made the decision that overall benefit outweighs the loss of a few spots. So I think, you know, as far as state of precedent, I think the precedent, that's good to say, is let's take these as, you know, one at a time, case by case. Use the judgment of the commission to see if this makes sense, if the potential risk, if the loss of a couple of spaces is offset. By more positive aspects and, you know, would ask you to continue to do that. I've been in a number of short-term rental, SDR stands for short-term rental, it's offset of that. I've been in a number of those and, you know, the owners have highlighted that one of the big benefits of adding short-term rentals is all the chores and the fringes. Or the benefit of our, of our local businesses and, you know, in particular food and beverage areas. So I think, you know, those kind of fit together, that's kind of the number one positive that I heard over and over. And so I think by just supporting this proposal, it also supports that, you know, as being a very big positive. You know, a number of the owners last week talked about their investments, you know, monetary investment. I'm not going to make my blush with them, you know, and share the monetary investment, he's managed the city, but I can tell you that. The investment of some of the short-term rental folks that I've heard is a fraction of what Mike is that invested, I actually saw. He's truly part of the city, he lives in the city. You know, and and does good for the city, like we do for that. And finally, you know, I think. Maybe we got, I think the point was made, you probably got some other higher priorities that we should be focusing on, like, you know, affordable housing. If you guys have more likes and points to live there than what I said to. So. So conclusion, I would ask you to support Mike's proposal. Anyone else? Okay, we can move to a motion to operation. Marty, you want to start?
Sure, you may begin start. I'm usually the bad guy. Again, I can't argue with anything that's been said, you know, with the, with regard to Mike. You know, when Mike came here, loved going back in my old office and it was great. I've done a great job since you opened up, I, I'm. There's been a lot of things that have been said here tonight, it still doesn't answer the question. That I said it last time and I respectfully say it to you, you've done, you've done spectacular and you all grew your spot. And that's wonderful, that's kudos to you. But I don't understand how that falls on the city to, you know, to continue to make this happen. There was a couple of, you know, semi accusations that there's, one of the last ones, we should focus on higher priorities. This wasn't brought, the commission didn't bring this, Mr. Stickley only brought this. So we have to address what's brought to us. The, you know, I still think that, let me ask you a question, Mike, respectfully, when, when you started, when you came. And you had outdoor seating since like day one, you were kind of tucked in the, you know, on the property. You know, the sides and the steps that, you know, used to go up to my office, I said at the last meeting. I respectfully disagree that this parking lot is not used, there was a couple of comments last time, oh, nobody uses this parking lot. Well, nobody's used it in the last two years, unfortunately, fortunately for you, but unfortunately because, you know, it's, it's. We're dealing with the COVID aspect. And so the, again, the outdoor seating you've had since you started. You know, tucked in much like in downtown on Main Street, the, what is now in Sunnyside, what is that? Red Mesa, it was said that, you know, the Bobbies would love something like this, you know, again, we have the building that you could. You know, set up, you know, toward the sidewalk and everything, onto the sidewalk, your barrels encroached on the sidewalk, even then. And, you know, it always looked nice, you know, the outdoor woodwork, everything you do. You do right, I'll give you that, still the best burger, say it again, is that last time? Love the steak burger, the, so what, the one spot that I ever saw you do. Anyhow, so out front. Between on the grass, I know you might ask me a question. On the grassland. Between the sidewalk and the vehicles there, you were, you're asking to put tables there? Okay, you know, that's not in parking, that's, I mean, maybe that's something we can talk about. The. You know, because that kind of goes along with going through downtown and everything, with the sidewalks and everything. But again, I guess. So. The provisions were made because of COVID and I respect that. And then those have ended now. Not COVID everywhere, understood, and not COVID provisions everywhere, not making that blanket statement. But this, this program has ended in time. And so I just don't, I don't understand. You know, I guess I would like to hear an explanation from you that what changed other than your business that grew and got big and huge and kudos. What changed from when you were in that building and then in the summer you had tables you could set up outside and that was wonderful, beautiful? And then, and then COVID hit and it was like, oh heck, we gotta go outside, understand that, you know, but now. And then, and then COVID hit and it was like, oh heck, we gotta go outside, understand that, you know, but now you don't have. So that's probably one of my biggest sticking points, uh, you know, because again, precedent setting, you know, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people have talked that they don't think it's precedent setting and, and I'm all, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, thinking outside the box. And I, and, and, and I'm fine to, you know, talk about thinking outside the box, but with plan. And not, that's not directed at you, that's not just with Mike's plan, that's, you know, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna move in that direction, then we've got to look at it as a citywide plan, how are we gonna do this? And how, you know, when, when the mason comes and says they want it and when Sunnyside says and when Bobby says. And I don't know, maybe, uh, um, you know, Subway wants it. And, uh, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe the, maybe the bike shop wants to set up right out in front of his, uh, you know, uh, all, all the time to do, do bike repair and right out there, show people, do demonstrations. They might sound silly, I don't know, but I, I really think that it is precedent setting. So I disagree with some of those comments that were made. Um, uh, let's see. You know, the, uh, I, I, I understand, I respect the fact that you're asking, you know, that you're offering, uh, the dollars for it, but, you know, uh, I'm not asking for more, I'm thinking that, I'm just saying that it's minimal, it's minimal gain, you know, for the city, for, you know, the, uh, the precedent that it's gonna set. Uh, the Main Street, you know, uh, they, they, they were not for it, it's premature, uh.
Can I say something?
Well, not about the Main Street, because it's set on that board, I mean, Mike, Mike can tell you the same thing. I, you might have something else from Jordan and I don't really care here about it. But, uh, I, you know, I can tell you that the board's tabled it all, they said, we're, we're, we're not gonna address this. We're not, we're not gonna set this precedent.
So they didn't say it's only just a table, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I would say that, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Uh, they were against it?
Uh, no, there was a fair amount of them that were like, no, you know, we're, we're not ready for this, we definitely are.
But they didn't make a decision.
Let's, okay. The, uh, well, okay, you cut me short, I'll be done. Oh, it's fine. I already, no, no, you didn't cut me short, I, I'm just, you know, it's, it's, it's the same thing that happened the last time, so I don't need to go back. And I don't need to, I don't need to, uh, you know, make you, make, uh, your friends aware of, you know, my thoughts, so.
Just a couple of things, um, Mike, did you, you say you reached out to the city attorney?
Yes.
And?
I've not had any response.
Um, you know, my, my two biggest things are, again, are, are safety and liability. Um, the, the business hiring, as well as she's paid, you know, everybody wants to sue everybody. And, uh, you know, something horrible happens in that parking lot and we agree to this, I'm afraid. Uh, even though there's insurance policies in place, we're setting ourselves up for some liability. I'm sure not for that, uh, put anybody in that position. Uh, and there's been a lot of people saying, do this set of precedents, this could be handled on a case by case basis. Uh, that's easy to say until somebody from another business comes before us with good arguments, good support. And how do we save both of them when they've also had good arguments and good support? Which is, you can do. Those are, those are my, my biggest, um, concerns. And again, you know, also, you know, the, the police department is not in favor of this and you can do. Oh, I'm just curious, uh, one thing, you know, has, has any discussion been made as far as putting more tables on that grassy area to the east of the parking lot, uh, next to Ray Street?
That's right, the South Street, yeah.
No.
Oh, you mean where you're here?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's a bit of a height for, for, you know, weight staff, but there's a lot of room right there.
Tom's gonna take out the weights.
Well, I know, I mean, that's, again, that's for service and safety.
This is, this, this, I can see. Was that a question?
I did, yeah, I guess it was.
Uh, I mean, I did, did briefly talk about it with Mike Kane. Uh, in order to do that, we still have to have a barrier to appease the MLCC that would encompass that entire area. So, I mean, could be doable. Uh, I don't think MLCC would like that cars are driven through the designated alcohol consumption area.
So the MLCC, you want to sort of, the liquor license, the legality of that?
Yeah, that has to be, uh, next to the property, uh, you can't have like a, an island away from the, uh, main MLCC liquor license. So I don't, I don't think that would be an option for the state.
Thank you.
No, I was just, so one clarification though, you're, so you're, you're asking for, again, oh, you're bad with that guy. So you're asking for this and this now instead of all of this, correct?
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, George, I mean, I, this, this I would see as being like downtown, um, or the sidewalks, uh, versus that, that part of the border.
You thinking like more cafe thing, is that what you're?
Then, that, that's unlike, but, so this, this was where you always had tables set. When you first opened, correct?
Correct.
So that's all I'm saying, there was always been outdoor seating and, uh, and COVID, yeah.
That's a good question, sure. Kevin, yes, could you comment, uh, I, I know we were talking about different barriers, just the end barrels and.
Sorry, dude. Explain a minute, please, people. But I talked with, uh, Mike, whatever, Mike, it's talking about. And stick by it, um, and brought a concern on the barrels, we had a late conversation of it. And we came to the conclusion that barrels are probably not optimal or viable, that's been a nasty backup. Uh, we didn't come up with, uh, concrete barriers, here, barriers are interlocked, plastic, both water and sand. Um, to discuss some of these set of issues, which um, which fortunately means it's gonna be somebody else's issue, you know, it's several states each other. Um, if they put those in there, short of a permanent steel barrier, it's the best option we have. See if you ask after that. And see if that's research, I found out. Same thing we were talking about before, is a plastic door, area which we use downtown for various school streets and work life and traffic as well.
I don't mean to put you in a spot, Kevin, that is added pressure, disturbance with the hesitation we had before.
Yes. Do you think with those, that would be the safest option I could come up with, other than installing something permanent? Nothing is waterproof, I would want to say, yeah, but these are, these are a lot better than a roller barrel. As we discussed, the problem with the barrel, the barrels are easily moved. Can't run off, most of them are hard move. I think this is the best option we have out there on something that is semi-hormonal.
We should, you have a question?
Yeah.
Last time, I, I voiced my support for this proposal. Um, my fellow commissioners, where I was very points. Through those. Um, first one being a barrier or, or what is needed to make it more safe and service achieved. Uh, I know I can ammure with this idea, so I can just say that this type of barrier would be better than the barrels. So, so to me, we've come to a compromise on that issue. Uh, Mike Stig talked about his insurance care, and, uh, so we, that was a legitimate concern, but it has been addressed by Mike's insurance company. We've talked about parking and concern, and Scott has answered that, that even with the additional seating, we could still have ten additional parking spots in that area. And, and Scott clarifies that on three hundred foot radius. The parking study looked at a block by block analysis and so every building and every use within the block, they calculated the number of parking spaces. Uh, that would require that use for building. And then they calculated how many parking spaces were on that block, so there, in the interior, they have anything on the roof of that block. So that would be the parking, uh, supply. And they take one number and the other, you know, that's sort of less than that, or that's in that block. So, okay, thank you. So, so our issue, I think, has been addressed and there is data that shows that there's ten additional parking spots. Along with that, you have a co-op that closes the late afternoon, you have, you know, I'm just getting at different hours of different businesses. Mike might be having, uh, an evening of busy, then that might be when the library is closed. So again, it's multiple use of the parking lot, different tracks. The DPW concerns about, uh, snowmobbing, uh, has been addressed. They might say that this contract goes through September, so it's not addressing the winter snowballing. I think Stig's has compromised by going from seven, back to quest of seven, not to four. And, and I just, I just really believe that one of our goals is to keep Moore City's economy strong. And so, I think this goes along, goes along with the Chamber of Congress, um, support for this. I think it goes along with a lot of local business people down in that neighborhood that sign a petition in support of Mike. It comes down to one issue that President is saying is a legitimate concern. And I guess my argument is, as we've always done, as Kim mentioned, let's make it work, let's try it. If it doesn't work, we can go back and take away, this is not written in stone. Let's, let's help our businesses, let's try to make everybody successful. And if another restaurant wants to request, that might be, that's may not be a negative thing, might be a possible thing. It means that the businesses are thriving and they want to increase their seating capacity and, and Marty, you asked, what's, what's different? Uh, I think what's different is outdoor seating, not just because of COVID, but outdoor seating because of our town, because of our lake, because of our vibrancy and mentality of our town, outdoor seating, not only in Moore City, but all across the nation, it's become very hot here. And, and it's, it's pretty cool, we all enjoy being outside. And we all enjoy warm summer evening, being outdoors. So President's setting, we, we can make this happen for Stig's. And if another business asks for a consideration, that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. And when we find out that we exceeded our capacity to park cars, we've exceeded our capacity to make it safe and comfortable for people to be in the streets and sidewalks on busy evenings, then we come back and we address this with the ordinance. And we address the parking and the cost and fees and, and the way to, uh, make this successful. If Sunnyside asks for a spot out front, just has thirty taproom, Tasty has two spots. And they see, they're seeing sixty-four people outside, they take down the two spots. And they create the, a barrier, but that's on busy Mitchell Street, it works. Tasty talks about parking all the time too, but guess what, it works. Moore City talks about parking, we have data that, that parking is, um, is not as big of an issue next proceed, we have data that can add up. Of course, parking could be an issue in ten weekends out of the year. Of course, it could be an issue on, uh, Friday and Saturday nights of July and, and August. But, um, that's a good thing, because it means that our businesses are being successful and that people are coming to Moore City. And that we are being partners in making Moore City a successful and strong county. Which means employment, which means vibrancy, but tell. So I appreciate the research since the last time on those issues, parking, insurance, a barrier. The DPW has been addressed, because we're not shoveling in the winter. Mike has gone from seven spots down to four. And again, as I said, the President's saying, we can deal with it, we can make this happen. We can, we can, if it doesn't work, in a year we revisit this with the ordinance. But if it does work, it's a win-win win situation. So I, I think the research, the discussion has answered a lot of questions, they were legitimate questions, they've been answered. I'm in full support.
But, Mike, you don't, you're not open during the day for lunch? We will be soon, okay. Uh, cause that was part of what Tom was basing his on, that, uh, businesses during the day. Uh, the, uh, and then the DPW concern was snowmobbing and mowing, so it still presents a bit of a problem for the mowing. Um, so we, we didn't go from seven to four. And, and I think it's a wonderful idea for you to offer, I like it more. I, I, so we went from seven to seven, we shifted. Uh, so we didn't go from seven to four. Uh, and, I, this, it's up to you here.
It would, you, you know, whenever it's appropriate. Well, well, maybe I would like to go before you, but. Yeah, I appreciate everything, uh, that we talked about, but, you know, I just want to give a little different perspective on things here. We have been through two years of very difficult towns. We should celebrate the fact that Mike Stickli only is still is open. Functioning, healthy, and has a problem that he, not necessarily a problem, but an opportunity to sustain his business, to see how it's gonna work. He's asking for three months, he's not asking for a precedent, we're not setting a precedent, we're giving somebody the opportunity to take advantage of, 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 of something he has found that brought success to his business. Every business in town is to have the opportunity to come to us and they have. I think it would be good if they did, so we could figure out, can he manage to take two parking spots in front of Sunnyside or Red Mesa? Couldn't do that, is that practical? Until they conform with the plan, all we can do is, uh, imagine what it might be if they do this, we're taking parking. I think we should really get time, what Mike is. I think we should really get kind of what Mike is talking about here and give him every opportunity to succeed. Maybe he will come in winter and ask us, are these spaces available for sale? So he can spend in this business. I think I'm just committed to trying to support our small businesses. This is, he's asking for parking spots. That's all. He's protected. He's addressed the issues that have been raised about safety. We have confirmation of not taking a risk for the city. You know, the city will wait for the city attorney, our insurance agents have not have given us a barrier to them there. So really, I would strongly encourage to support if Stig's request for four parking spots. I would like to say that, Mike, I think if this goes past, that we need to be a little more disciplined in keeping the sidewalk free and open and reconsider people coming and going and not to think that it's just noise, but that to appreciate the fact that it's public property and and needs some discipline. But I, I, I would strongly, strongly encourage the commission to give Stig the opportunity to see what happens in summer. And then we have that information in October and November and December to figure out how we can deal with the rest of the year.
Well, one of the things that makes Moore City unique is welcoming adults. And for quite a period of time, we've gotten a rough application of not being afraid of things and trying things, trying to take risks. I think specifically with regards to when the regulations change with regards to all-train vehicles. A lot of communities were concerned about arriving on your streets and things of that nature. A lot of places basically said, let's ban them. Point City took the opposite approach and said, let's allow them, and if there becomes an issue, we'll fix it. I think back to when we did and worked with a high school on their video back to graduation. That should have broken every rule that sounded there. We had people jumping off the old Kilman's clock tower at that time with a, with a zip line that's being held online by what turned out to be a little shaky clock tower and on the other side by one of the city fire trucks. And then they turn around with their fake DeLorean and lit the street on fire, a street that we just paved with those scripts down there. I mean, there were so many things that most communities would say, there's too much risk with regards to that. Well, I think crying risk is an easy way just to say, no, we don't want it to look. We've taken risk after risk at Point City. And there is maybe one or two times where it's worked against us. And where it's worked against us, we've learned it and we revisited it. I agree, there may be other people that are coming to the doors that are asking for requests, you know, based on what we're hearing from Stig tonight. And I, I concur. Let them come forward. Let them see how we can best use our resources to make Moore City exciting and successful. Mike has done that. He's been a good business partner. I remember when I first came to town, I had a commissioner that was really into need and order. Didn't want to see anything out of the sidewalk. Didn't want to see any business displays or anything of that nature. That's great. You have a nice sterile sidewalk, but you didn't have any business to have. We've gotten away from that. We allow, you know, you go to the, the Moore City Harvester store, you go to the co-op, or a lot of places have displays set up there, seating, kind of like what you're talking about along the street here. This is one more step. Will it be a long-term success for us? We don't know. But I think we'll never know unless we try it and see where it takes us. And if it takes us someplace that we don't like, we can adjust and react and do something differently going forward. But I'd much rather have not at Stig's and having successful businesses in our community than I'm just having empty parking spaces or something down the road. My recommendation would be, based on coming up with an ability to protect the public, which it seems like that we haven't been able to resolve. From all I can see, that addresses all of my department's concerns that are out there for this time period of this year. So I would go from a neutral position in my most recent demo to support the recommendation to try this to secure.
We could, would it be appropriate to offer up a, I guess, a compromise on a safety barrier thing? So the, the wooden grills are more aesthetically pleasing than a Jersey bear. But there's no reason why wood or can't be filled.
Yeah, good point. Okay, commissioners, I think we're ready for motion. Can I ask a point clarification?
Sure, sure.
What are we voting? Are we voting on for parking spaces or are we voting on shifting stuff?
I, I was just thinking about that, Marty. We're voting on this diagram A. That's, that's probably my background thing. I think it is, it is way to do it.
Can you clarify that, Mr. Mayor?
On the map of, if you ever hear at the bottom, there's A.
Yes.
So I would just say, the request for me, if, if we were to have a, a, a motion, which I guess I can make, and then we can have this, if there's a second, we can have discussion. That we approve the request of Stig's for extended seating outside this building as represented in diagram A. And to work with the city police department and city manager to make sure that it's all as required to be for safety and flow of traffic. That's my motion through September thirty. So there's a second.
I will, I will second. Is there any further discussion?
Just clarification. So between the sidewalk and curb.
Correct.
Traditionally, on Friday nights, Saturday nights, there's been music in that same venue.
Well, that's music that Mike is providing. He's probably not going to be able to do that unless he moves some tables, so he can, he can have music there.
My, my point is that grass area has been used in the past. Keeping the sidewalk walk open, keeping the barrier along the curb for music that they balance, they propose for table seating. For us, that's perfect. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, Tony, you second that?
I did, yes.
Is there any further discussion, commissioners? Marty?
I, I, I mean, I, I, no offense, Mike, but I feel like I sort of got, I came thinking that you were shrinking this and we didn't, oh, we didn't share. That's, um, that's fine, that's fine.
But Marty, if I may clarify that, you're not shifting to the public purpose, but you're not taking that away.
I respect that. I'm all for the, I, I said it when, when I talked first. I'm all for, I'm all for the problem. I, I really am. Because again, when, when, when he came here, when he started his business, he had outdoor seating. Now give him four more tables. I, I applaud that. I'm, I'm all for that because that's, that's what has happened through time. That's not changing anything. I just, I just think the parking thing is, is, you know, you're totally changing what this town, you know, it's not, it, it, we've already made it. I'm done. It's okay. There's a motion on the table.
Rockwell, Peter?
I'm glad.
Mike?
Moody. Me, Hammer.
I.
Blaster.
Name.
Is there another motion?
Sure. I, I, I'd make a motion that, again, we, we allow Mike to do what he's always done, you know, living outside and and add the, the four spaces out in front on the Park Street side, add those four spaces and and not deal with the, the parking issue.
Clarification, which what I brought up before. They don't need our commission to use that space between the sidewalk and curb, do they?
There is a procedure in place where then we work with other businesses that downtown, like Red Mesa or Lake Street, or, excuse me, you know, Lake Street Market, where we do provide our outdoor seating. I think we can handle that and straighten the under our existing rules. But I don't think there is a motion required to do what Commissioner Woody would like to do. Those four tables out along the front, that is a formidable item already. Correct, Scott?
Correct.
Which which brings us back to the point, Marty. You know, you said you were hoodwinking. I don't think you were. Those were permissible to begin with. And so the proposal is for parking spots. And and I respectfully if you disagree with that, so we have, you already voted. I think four up front are part of the, should be part of the motion because they're already allowed.
And I, I, okay, then, then why didn't we have, well, I, I want to stop. Okay, we had a vote. It was two to two. Oh, we're doing a prehashing of the motion. If somebody has a new idea that we can inform you, do you have the?
I saw it.
What was that?
It's a formidable use for the lawn.
Yeah.
It is not, does not require any action of the city commission or the lawn to be used. There's a cafe permit. You can see tables and chairs up on sidewalks right now. It's something that admittedly handled in this street. What was new to this was a use of parking. So, Mr. Mayor, if I made a motion to approve of the four parking spots to be used for seating, would that be the same motion that was just denied? It is awfully similar.
You know, that's, I know it is very, you know, I can't. It's not like a
I just, I mean, I think that's important, your clarification. If indeed four out on the grass were part of the thought process to deny or approve, then I think asking for clarification. Sorry.
I guess I did. Well, the first motion was to approve Plan A, which is basically what's up on the screen right now, and it included all those components. If you made a motion that was different, I think you might be able to make the second motion. Ultimately, that what the commission does with it is up to you. I think you could make a different motion.
Could you suggest what motion might be?
I'd rather not. I mean, you've got my recommendation. I don't want to give the middle of the session with your question.
I'll make a motion to approve four parking spots to be used as indicated on Plan A for seating and a barrier to protect us.
Okay, I will second that. Commissioners, there's more to session. I would say, is there any more? Talk? Can, can we talk any further?
Sure.
You know, what, what? Okay, going back to, you know, like spending for a month, I, I'm tired of the, the labor is just trying to get to the end here. I, I will agree with you, Tom, that, you know, I believe the four was part of, you know, a complete shift. I, that would have been some nice knowledge to have completely been, you know, aware of. I was looking at it like the rest of town. See the front, like even the sidewalk, so we have that. Oh, now, now you already always could have. Why didn't you use that before?
Uh, well, I could show you. Kind of getting money over time, a lot of traffic, po-traffic. Our solutions for that were for just some routes outdoor. Rooms or something, tables. It was just easier to see the parking lot as it was right next to our side doors. That's basically it.
And and I get the three on, on this side. This is the X X O. That's, I get that. Used it twenty-nine. Um, so, I, you know, is, is there, is there a compromise if now, now he's going to use four up front? And, you know, not totally use as much of the parking lot? I guess it doesn't matter. I, it doesn't matter to you. I don't believe, I, I, I mean, you know, somebody in the parking lot, somebody in the parking lot, whether there's one space or or three spaces. So I guess we're just, you know, splitting hairs and respecting the fact that, uh, I'm worried I didn't get due to, um.
Well, I apologize, Marty. I, 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 I be confusing the airport in the state. It was not my intention.
Well, all I'm saying is, we went through them last night. The seven spaces were here, and now we redrew it and we put three here and four up front. That was all that stood, so. Okay, any other discussion?
You know, I, I, the only comment I'd like to make to commissioners is that, you know, there's been talk about, why didn't you think about this before your business plan when you opened? You know, I think, I think if when your business is, small businesses, you, you learn things as you go along, things become successful, you can pursue that. And I, I think that's a part of it. If there's no other discussion, I call for both of us, Jessica?
Me, Hammer.
I.
Blaster.
Name.
Captain.
I.
Moody.
I think. I can't do it.
It's too much.
Hey, under, I am meeting, I have been, we're in the engineering service.
It's the mission where electric service
Could we wait just a second? Have commissioner, then we check.
Appreciate it.
So electric service has been turned off and is connected to our existing, we refer to as the main code that is also referred to as DOTD, and we looked at some of these different plans that we used for Scott and Marina. They have people close and change their peers to improve to save the around the Marina's sand and water. We knew that our electrical system would have to be updated at some point in time. We have been told that it was brand five and it was built to code when it was originally installed, and it has been started making changes to where we can touch that electrical and upgrade your, your main changes that we would have to brand out to current ones. And so it's kind of been left alone as we've talked over the years about Marina maintenance and peers, expansion, et cetera. It makes sense to do it all when the DOTD is replaced. Instead of trying to run old wires or new wires through an old DOT or the new DOT in that way, or do the electrical for. Through discussions with Charlie, how my building is making progress and our local electrician. Opened over the winter, he asked the damage to the ramp that goes down to the DOT. well, open so over the winter, um, yes, the damage to the ramp that goes down to the DOT. Um, electrical cables run through that ramp, um, to service the pedestals that are down that. Knowing that we have to replace that for that. Uh, D P W, this frame, once the stone was gone, they had to get to see exactly what they needed to do. Contacted the whole with electrician to discuss what the possibilities were, what would have to be done to be able to replace that ramp, and we, we can't be touched the electrical line as our. During that investigation where they started looking at it closer, pulling that cord so they could see inside. Um, it was noticed, um, that some of the conduit inside the DOT had pulled apart, exposing some of those junction boxes. And so with that said, uh, the company building official, um, became involved and looked at it as well. And decided based on, uh, some electrical gold standards and safety standards that the electrical shouldn't be shut down. While the DOT wasn't that in use when we were running the blowers, um, to keep the ice from forming around that, he allowed it to stay there. As soon as the ice started moving off the lake, it, um, it was turned off and then recently totally disconnected from the panel. Um, in order to shoot running this issue, we set some up that will have to be made. Uh, the first step in this is to ask, um, the engineering firm, the electrical, um, engineer, come on here and take a look at it. Um, if you're not, it would be a little bit, we're trying to exactly, um, what needs to be replaced and to what extent. Time is kind of the essence, and most of you know, um, it's difficult to find contractors that are available willing to do work. Um, drills at times are difficult to come by. And we won't know what we need and how hard it needs to go until we get somebody out here to get out of that. I've talked to, um, local electricians, um, none of them are interested in doing work until they have certain plans or plans to work off them. Um, and that's pretty common when you're dealing with electrical, um, products around the water. While the timing of this is not ideal, um, from a voter standpoint, an operations standpoint, providing the safe environment is our first priority. As you heard, uh, the city is not successful in using the EDA grant, uh, that we required back in January. The three grants that we might forward to the state, um, the one that has been potentially approved or being recommended for people is for land site utilities, which includes the sea electrical. Um, it was the hope that if we have the EDA grant, that these state grant applications that they were approved would be used for match. That's not going to be the case, um, but we still have to address the electrical issue. I think that when we talk about not getting the EDA grant and re-expansion, that that's a subject for, I would say maybe the city commission would want to consider some future work sessions. So it's not to be placed at the commission meeting with all the other business where we can really focus on what needs to happen with the ramp, how to move forward, knowing that this, you know, grant is not available to us and taking in all of the comments that we've been hearing over the last few months from community members and kind of reboot and come up with some kind of plan that can move us in the right direction that is hopefully palatable, you know, tall. But in the meantime, I think we need to start addressing the electrical issue. Um, so tonight will be forward, this is an actual proposal for engineering services. There are funds and revenue budget, um, currently to pay for the engineering. And once we get all that report back from them, we'll know kind of what we're working with um, as far as cost for the electrical, um, replacements and all that we have to do as far as adjust the wiring and the panels, the pedestals, you know, that's still out there, really is not available, so. Until we get somebody to come up here outside.
The one question. You're talking about DOT D. Correct. DOT D has no power.
That's correct.
And the other part of the marina over by the, uh, we're.
So the, the, you're referring to the base years, which is one through ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a separate technical service, separate panel. That electrical service arrives not up to the current, with the shelter framework on there. None of that wire runs in or, you know, the water or in the DOT. And then the T DOT that we refer to, the newer DOT that was put up on your scope, that is up to current open standards with the shelter framework.
I have several questions. I don't know what we'd like.
Oh, God.
One of the one, the one question that I have, the other ones would be after public comment. The, the one question that I have is the agenda that's on the table for the public report. I have a copy for a meeting, and it still has the incorrect wording compared to the revision. This agenda that is there for the post is consider the recommendation from the executive assistant of our master, our diversity contract with our mom's random game services for phase one of the marina expansion employee. We continue to drive that, um, that is not, we're having a conversation.
That's correct, and I apologize. So the, the corrections were made, I'm not sure why they didn't get printed to put there. We are talking about just engineers of.
You hear you for the electric.
We, we, we have to apologize.
That was the first question. But I can wait until that gets published, for the rest of the questions.
May I just want to say here?
Yeah, I know, there are people wanting to push it forward. So, who's the citizen's comment, um, Penny?
First of all, I'm really glad that the electrical is going to be good. Well, that's a safety concern, I always think that should be a priority. And when I was certainly looking at this, I found that most of the people who signed against the expansion wanted our current arena to be brought up to standards and maintained before any consideration for an expansion was made. Now we didn't get that big grant, so I think now our focus, like you suggested, let's talk it over. Let's let the community have the vote, we asked repeatedly for the city to take the survey and let go. But the citizens right now just want a focus on the arena we have, getting it operated, making it up to every standard for safety. I think that's what most of the community wants, and I think they'll get support for it. I don't think they'll be a hassle of that. I think the expansion is a question, and there's a lot of issues related to that of the electrical needs to be done.
And, may I add, in that, we should just back your name and.
Yes, Penny, our, or, so the North Street.
Anyone else?
My little question, um, Bonnie Johnson, nine one one, most intrigued. My question is, it's just, I don't know. Can the arena still operate if the wiring isn't up today? I mean, can other parks be used, or does it have to all be, I mean?
So, and I think.
You know what I'm saying?
So I can answer your question, but I think you're asking a different question.
Okay.
So, yes, the whole arena is operational. But once we replace that wire, will there be electrical service to all the docks? No, if people still want to use that right now, they're certainly available. It was not a kindergarten, you know, once that's disconnected, the safety issue is gone. Okay, and it's just a matter of, do people still want the dock there without the power?
Do you have a little comment?
Um, I have a comment and I say, so I guess not sure how you want to work it.
You've got five minutes.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm, my name is Sandra Richard, five nine six, please. Now I'm confused, is this agenda on the table and the language is here what's in front of us right now?
Could you read that, I don't have that.
It says, phase one, it's consider the recommendation for our gross contract with Abbott Marsh Engineering Services for phase one of the marina expansion going with ten year project, amount of, see thirty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
That doesn't matter, okay. What, what, what the recommendation is, is the contract with Abbott Marsh for engineering services for electrical assessment. Engineering bidding and project oversight for a amount of, let's see, thirty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. It overrides the city manager to sign all the required documents associated with the project. I'll turn on the screen above.
Okay, I can't see that.
Okay, um, I, I've read the proposal, and it still refers to DOT D. And.
This step, right?
No, I missed that, I'm making a statement. It still refers to DOT D, and that's, for sure. Um, it is clearly, uh, basically a timely materials contract. And I would lay odds, this will end up running more about fifty thousand dollars. I concur with Penny, we don't really have a choice here. But let's be clear about what, what we're really getting in front of us. Um, everything is in add in this, in this contract and with Marco. Uh, there are drawings that are going to be used based on what this reads. Any engineering services will be at one hundred and fifteen dollars an hour. Um, and the ELE, H E D, uh, change orders are going to be long some. If that's the case, then going city better have an authorization to proceed to sign off on us to determine their effort, um. I don't know if we have any drawings or schematics currently, but if we don't, they're going to have to draw them for us. Uh, it sounds like what's, what, what we have here is, is a study. They're going to be doing an, an assessment, a straight up assessment of, of what we have, and they're going to jointly prepare a recommendation. And they're going to prepare a recommendation that may go into a bid application. So at that point, when we make the recommendation, it really needs to come back to this before it goes to bid, otherwise we're possibly wasting the time in the bid process. Because we need to confer, I want it to take place. Um, because we're going to be a sizable quest aid on this. So I see the city commission dragging the bus on this. Um, I would make the suggestion that, um, I'm sure they may, but if they size the panel and any of the work to be ready for power with DOT D, because at some point in time, it is going to be worth it. So it might make sense, let's let you modify the proposal, first with one stone, find out what that will cost, and you will be there one day, it's, it will. Um, what I find frustrating is, and I send it to all you guys, was the facility, water waste facility study that started in 2019. And I believe you completed the paperwork submitted to go back to that. To send back to them, to them to fully get the results. It's forecast capital requirements, zero five, five to ten, ten to twenty. And in there, it went through every one of the features of our arena. And in my opinion, we, this, we saw this coming. And no fairytale, another EDA grant or any of that is going to get done before the situation arose. I'm not sure how it's going to affect our D N R reservations if people are coming and expecting power. But it will, it will have an impact, I'm going to put that forward. And I would suggest, this group views what was created, what we talk about going forward, and what needs to be done for this marina that makes sense. And Penny's alluded to it, and I can say it. Not that the group could reform, but we, the people of Boeing, are asking the city focus on dealing with what you have in its existing footprint and do what's judicious to make your issues that are in the five, zero, and twenty year plan that makes sense for Point C within its existing footprint.
Thank you for that, I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Be free to work with me in that street. I have a couple of questions for Bart, so I'm like, back and forth. How many slips are on that, that you're talking about?
Um, number eleven through thirty four.
Oh, yes.
Twenty three, twenty three plus, um, you know, thirty four, eighty, so twenty five.
Do you have slips with electricity from normal line that's out?
We charge the same price as well.
Thank you. You know?
I have Dr. Van, six west Main Street. It's really very simple. You just, we need to have the engineer, uh, by engineers about what needs to be done, get the electric up to speed, and get it done as rapidly as possible. Because the, the season is upon us, yeah. People, when they come to Point City, they're going to expect there's that sort of transit voter, that they're going to have power at the slip or wrench to there. And plus, on that, Dr. Van, a lot of people, by having that dock, is probably seasonal wrenches, and they expect power. So, I just encourage you, hire the company, get the engineering done, and do it as rapidly as possible.
You know?
I know I spoke, I was just going to ask, if you try to make it clear what the proper wording for the engineering services is, because it says for the expansion, doesn't mention necessarily the DOT that's being addressed. Did you, do you have clarified wording in your?
Well, this is what I read, and I'm on the screen, yeah. You see, that, that, that's the recommendation. It doesn't clearly state the DOT D. I'm sure you can, uh, I'm sure that's included in the motion.
It just was a little unclear to me, I don't know, more than does that out right now.
Uh, I understand it was, that our, we're going to use it at the worst.
So yes, we are trusting the power that services DOT D, so all plan and was on that.
Anyone else? Can you talk, I just get in here?
I'm just going to ask.
Are you there for this question?
Yes, would you consider that it is reasonable to size the panel?
We have those discussions with the engineer.
So where can we go to bid? And there are synergies that go along with doing that now.
We, we have those discussions, yeah, now.
So assign him here. Thank you.
We, we can have anything that we choose. If we say we want to go with this or we want to leave this, they are happy to go ahead.
So Bart, I'm going to ask you, so what points will come that the city commission will approve this?
So the first step is to get them up here. Um, I have the technicals scheduled for the twelfth, which is Thursday, um, to come up here, get out of that, they'll look at everything, they'll, they'll go back and they'll write a summary and provide that to us, that I will share um, of exactly what they think needs to be done with some cost estimates. If they think that there is additional engineering services about that being provided, Abbott Marsh has real pretty good of their price. H E D, basically, um, there's not only the pack, um, these electrical contractors that will write up these specs and then they serve by that. And H E D is somebody that Abbott Marsh works with on a regular basis. Abbott Marsh contacted them, had a decision on their sense of urgency, can we make time for this project or maybe? Once they, they know that they're working, once they get up here, et cetera. If they are, if they think that there's going to be additional costs, um, there will be, they will let us know here in the summary, and that will come back to the commission if there's going to be additional. And then, once you get eyes on the summary, we can give the go ahead to put it up for bid um, with whatever parameters we might want to add in addition to what they're suggesting. Um, with whatever parameters we might want to add in addition to what they're suggesting.
All right, anything else? Okay. That was the question. Um. I'd just encourage you to move as quickly as possible. I know there's getting twenty five or so slips. Um, a lot of those are probably rented already for a lot of the summer. And I think people will make a decision on whether or not they want to be there or just the revenue issue. Uh, I also, it's really. Last thirteen to go away. Um, or without power for the whole season and their revenue goes down there. So, kind of, so I think it's important to get on it as soon as possible. You know, I've got, I've got. A lot of my, I have reservations for hopefully this year, and I know a lot of people that do. But I heard it's, move that process as quick as possible.
Okay. Move to, uh, issue one version. Would you have a word concern?
It's just to clarify, Barb, so for this thirty eight thousand dollars, uh. When there's, when they've done that work. Uh, is there, there's a potential that, I guess I'm asking, will they have drawings and specs that electrician can look at and go. Here's what I got to do, they say I gotta do this, this and this, make this right. Is that, is that for the thirty eight thousand dollars or would there be more potential?
That is for the thirty thousand and plus H E D comes back and is said is more extensive than we originally thought based on the information you receive. And they have to increase. Their cost, which would come back to the.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anything else? I agree with, um, Jeff, I agree with John. I trust Barb one hundred percent to go through the proper procedures and proper. Methods and use Evan Evan Marsh and give us done as quick as possible. Let's do it. Anytime, Jim.
Um, I approve tonight with the timeline, your ETA timeline, however we can get better. Even even in conflict, a wreck, possibly this summer.
It really, it depends on, and we can find electrical kind of, I believe that we can get it out to bid, I mean, we will need as quickly as we can get it out to bid. But we might not have any others. We could set a timeframe and say, we want this work completed by August or July. We want to get their bids because of that. Um, we just don't know. And then we didn't get a kind of credit, it says we can move sooner than later. We don't know depending on the extent of it, for example, um, pedestals. They could be one of those items that you just need to jump into that. We just don't know. I mean, I wish I did, because as soon as this email goes out to all of our transit holders and D reservations, I'm going to get inundated with calls with those type of questions, so I wish I knew.
Right, that that holds value to the urgency of the timeframe now. We need to make a decision tonight, this, this, this. Overall, this is tonight's decision made and had the end result, probably in here back down. Um, next summer, at the end of this fall, so on and so forth. Um, that's why it makes it important to. Have that thought process, um, to try and validate the A surgeon, we need to act now, tonight. Um, so Arden and Mosh are being contracted since two thousand and three. When they've done their plans, do they have any minimum scope? So when we did a budget meeting, we're budgeting for twenty five thousand dollars to make it through this, um, for the marina. And I expressed it, I think probably in about five to seven different ways, how frustrating that was to see that we're budgeting twenty five thousand dollars. The same budgeting amount that we have had on the last five years. Um, and hasn't been the correct amount. Um, and this is a little bit budget, this one, this one, I already gave a little bit budget right out of the pocket. Um. So it's just the irony there with that budget meeting, with me bringing up those concerns and them not really coming forward. Um, and already here we are, we're going to blow that budget tonight, most likely. Um. So with Arden, Arden and Mosh, they fumbled with the E D A burn, with the errors and the issues that we're having before. I know we have a relationship with them since two thousand and three. What would it look like putting out bids for engineering, trying to come in, do this for like certain occasion where. Because if Arden and Mosh already has done this work, but they've done a scope, but dragging up a piece of cost with X amount of dollars, because this electrical work, like you've said. Several times though, this last six months, has been a known issue. Um, and has Arden and Mosh not even got a grasp or a scope of what electrical work needs to be done? Because looking at this now, it looks like they have no idea and potentially it's going to cost thirty thousand dollars, but expect a change in order to come down the road. Most likely, does this going to cost a lot more than thirty thousand dollars?
So Evan Marsh, um, they, the company themselves are not able to produce the certified electrical specs. That are in our stamp that would be provided to the county during permitting. That electrical contractors want to see before they're going to take the project out. So that's why they are with H E D, who has those.
Right, essentially they're not an electrical engineer.
Correct, so there's always, if someone has a man pricing for electrical work, they're contacting local, um, electricians that they've worked with in the past. And approximately what is this costing, how much is going for the foot costing, that's what they're doing now.
Right, what would it look like contracting services directly with an electrical engineer instead of having a middleman? Contracting with the electrical engineer and Arden and Mosh.
So I think in, in, um. This is solid, one of them.
Yeah.
For one of the terms, so.
What was it?
Um.
Fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen.
Eighteen hundred dollars. Seventy percent.
Fifteen percent of that was. Yeah, Arden and Mosh figured he just has a consultant mark of eighteen hundred dollars.
So and I guess my comment is, I don't know for sure, because certainly I'm going to try and pick them up the phone and then we ignore them. But I'm guessing that we would have a difficult time getting people to jump right on for us in the process. If we put it out to bid, there's a process to that. And so we would be sorry for being even, you know, not those results back. Um, and if the bad reserve is, and that's a chance to take, um, trying to go on our own. In doing this versus using somebody who already has these contacts and people that they work with.
Right, and that was kind of, that was maybe my question, timeline callback and bidding off this, these services. And essentially, we don't even know what that timeline callback is. If we don't accept this tonight and we go with or contracting services, then electrical engineer cutting out the middleman. Is it safe that money is already on it, but twenty five thousand dollars of this one line, so we don't have any more maintenance or recourse? Budgeting for the marina, um. We don't even know how that impacts the timeline essentially, and that's why I asked, just even the E T A. So I'm having a hard time seeing the need to immediately jump on this, because I'm not even seeing how it's going to impact your timeline. Essentially. Is there a cap on a change order? So with this agreement I go through, I don't see. You know, it's the thirty eight thousand dollars now when they come back and say, hey, you have said this, you guys passed it. Um, but unfortunately, we get another forty thousand dollars. Does there a cap, percentage cap on a change order? Or once we take this agreement, whatever expenses they they incur, they just go back to the city to pay a hundred and check essentially?
I don't know, we're a gap, we want to be separate, um, which, you know, we certainly have that Friday. Um, again, Evan Marsh is just good, we can give their fees, now they think that they overdid all of their expenses, we got to know who's H E D. And we would have those, whether we want the H E D or something on our own or through this.
Okay. And I would assume Arden and Mosh isn't hearing that, right?
That's correct. And I didn't have to.
Okay.
So. So. Unfortunately, extremely bad news. Um, you're talking about three different, uh, electrical contractors, it's. Eight to twelve weeks out for, you know, their, they can't get the, they can't get the break. So, uh, I don't, uh, I I was going in Tim's direction and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm bidding out this electrical contract. Because I guess I would like to ask, so what, there's, there's a, there's a repair. And then there's a move forward for. Making DOT D what, you know, improving it for the future. So. It, and and from the county's standpoint, we're, we're stuck at, uh, if you, if you touch. Any of the builders on DOT D, everything's got to be on the code. If you don't, then service can be brought over. Uh, I, in in talking to those same electrical contractors, which I understand that they will not. Touch it without engineering specs, no, they they all said the same thing, I get that. But let's be clear that Evan Marsh is not eighteen hundred dollars, it's twenty six thousand, eighty hundred dollars. H E D's been this, you know, to do the work, which in talking to three different electrical contractors, H E D would be a little bit high. Uh, I'm, I'm back that side. So I guess it's, I guess I need to know what trying to do. If if we're, if 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 again, with with the season being shot for DOT D, not electric. For the most part, twelve weeks, what's this all the way, you know, we're we're past the season. So with that being said, then I, I, you know, I go back to to Tim's point, I would, I would love to, you know, uh. Have another bid by a different contractor, uh, or a couple of different, uh, um, engineering firms. For moving forward and look to, uh, construct it. If you're looking to reconstruct the the builders, then to get that figured out and figure it out where we're going. I, you know, I just think spending thirty eight thousand dollars is egregious when, when the the. Simple repair, which is not fixed to the dock or anything like that, a simple repair, uh, you know, coming, you know, bringing power in. Uh, is, it is going to be not even probably fifteen to twenty, if if it holds, that that I was asking people about. Uh, the, uh, and showing the specs. So I guess I, you know, I'm just saying, if we're, if we're moving, if we're moving forward to rebuild DOT D. That's fine, but let's, let's look at, you know, an engineer that's going to rebuild DOT D. And at that point in time, you know, thirty eight thousand dollars isn't egregious for looking at the entire scope. Uh, for, for just doing a fix, which again, I'm sorry, John, and you know, those were the quotes you call the contractor yourself, or, you know. I, I mean, it's, it's sad, you know, it's, it's the supply thing again, and they can't, they can't get these heavy duty breakers, so, uh, you know. I I don't want to give anybody all false hope that this is going to happen. Um, so I I guess I, I I really, I I would lean toward, um, addressing, um, having a, another quote. From another engineer firm, because we are, we're already past season, so we're looking to next year, you know. But we do, but but in the same, with that being said, with that being said, we still need that, uh, that temporary fix to an extent. Because otherwise, we're going to be without boulders, uh, all the way along. So, and there goes. Not D and not D and then, you know, after the other construction, with mother nature nights. So, um, I I'm not interested in in moving forward with this.
Um, part of the question I have is the thirty eight thousand dollars for the estimated cost to redo DOT D. The electrical. It was somewhere, did they ever felt about now, or did it sound about? And. All part, if you look at these estimates you have.
From grants.
That was a grant.
Yeah, from grants, so it was, uh. It's worth it, I need my own knowledge. Um, you know, to, um. Waterways, and the land side. Right. So is the thirty eight thousand, you're talking about the big, big contract management, all that sort of stuff, that would include making. Having, you know, constructed and built out.
The electric.
The electrical. But that would be about eight percent of what the actual estimated cost is. Like, or in, or, you know, somewhere.
So, so the number ran for the inside, which is also included in monitoring, and I don't have the estimated range between those two.
It looks like forty thousand, a little higher.
I thought it was split because that was the direct concern that had budgeting need was exactly twenty five thousand that we're budgeting, I said, looking at the electrical line, I'm sorry, we're going to make three per hour now. And I thought appropriate down the electrical work was like a, um, hundred, thirty, seventy five. Yeah, it was like hundred thirty to a hundred eighty five thousand, like that. When we were in that budgeting meeting, I was like, well, look over here, I can tell you, we just fixed electrical, we're going to go, but. And it was like, yeah, but.
So that was for wind side, that was operating that panel and that side, that was not a question all around that.
Gotcha.
I agree, guys. Because we did with Evan Marsh since two thousand and three, there seems to be a hundred current that that we're not getting good service, that they're not treating us good. I would say just the opposite. I would say Barb has confidence in Evan Marsh because we have had a working relationship since two thousand and three. Is that a fair statement, Barb?
We have a good working relationship with them. I feel that I can call on them with questions outside of cameras. Now, what do you think about this? Do you think we should move forward with this? What are the change on this? And they've always been very gracious in taking my time, answering my questions, my emails. Doing some little changes of soul to different drawings and stuff, it's a loss. So yes, they, we've got to really.
And it's in their best interest to treat their clients with respect and with proper fiscal management, because if not, we would leave them. So they are willing to come here this Thursday, in two days. I do sense, there is a sense of urgency that Evan Marsh shows up on Thursday and heads us in the right direction. And call the middleman, yes, we need a middleman, because I don't think Barb has the ability to go out and, and in the next two days, contract. Or contact, make a contract with electrical companies that aren't willing to work. Like, they need to, and that's how big business works, that you do that with very fast and our engineering firm on road construction. We need to act as quickly as possible. On this proposal. And and not. Trying to nitpick the numbers that, we're not the experts, Barb's the expert, Evan Marsh is the expert. And and I respectfully that process, and I don't think we are. Going to gain money, in fact, I would assume we're going to lose money by going out and finding our own electrical contractor. And nobody's going to show up in two days. I I know that. That Evan Marsh will show up in two days and give us good direction, good advice on how to proceed. And we're not. We're not losing money by doing it through that. They treated us well over the years. And and it's, it's, it's in their benefit to treat us well. So. Yeah. I think we need to move forward in the sense of expectancy to get this done. We're going to have plenty of times. Um, you know, Tim, with respect, I said, we tried several times to explain how to put more money into the budget, and we didn't get it. We didn't get it because. We disagreed with you, that wasn't the way to do this. Um. We asked Barb, we asked Barb, can you find us a line item? Can, just to fill in there so that we can have a line item for repairs. It didn't work because we didn't. This is all a long process with anticipation of grant line. We didn't get the grant line. We told us ourselves, when Barb was here at the convention meeting, if we don't get the grants, we have to sit down, have a work session and really go to work. We told us ourselves, when Barb was here at the convention meeting, if we don't get the grants, we have to sit down, have a work session, and really go to work. We're all going to do that, we have to do this, and it refers to, to, uh, the comments made, yes, we need to have a, a plan and a budget. But in the meantime, we gotta get this structural taken care of, and the best way is with Evan Marsh being here in two days to give us direction, leadership, and advice.
I got a promise, maybe that, uh, is this program. True. So during the budget meeting, that one line item, I asked Barb, did you do your best to find one item? To show where the last five years of what we've been budgeting for is not correct. The state of the merger, that's, that's, that's the justification, the validation that happens, that's that speaking piece of that. Barb, I have followed up, did you follow up with me on one line item? You said you were gonna do your best to look for something, I never had an email or a phone call. Is there, you, I don't, I don't want to tell him right now that I've followed up on it without you truly trying to, but I've never followed up on it. I remember, um, just like, very, that's very consistent for me to voice something and be told, well, I'll look for something, or I'll follow up, and I don't want to follow up. This, this is becoming a common thing. Um, and I don't believe that budgeting through twenty five thousand, one and break down is the correct thing to do, but that's just me. Um, and that was the whole argument back at the budgeting point. I think any engineering firm, any electrical engineering firm is gonna have the best interest of serving their clients. At, to the best of their ability, and I don't think that's our best option, that you have to develop or treat that base of relationship to get that service out of the engineer firm. I might make any electrical engineering firms that want to serve their clients to the best of their ability, otherwise they're not a business for long. Um, and then on top of that, with the urgency in two days, I would not be here, Barb just told us she doesn't know how that impacts time. She, if they're here in two days, that doesn't guarantee that we're gonna have power at the end of the season, doesn't guarantee we're gonna, we don't even know if we'll have power at the end of the season. So with that as the conversation, that's what I'm utilizing to validate right now, you're saying jump on immediately. I'm saying I need to be shown by any jump on immediately, how does that impact our time? I'm not being told any way, shape, or form that's gonna impact our time. So that's my position. And you said, and I think we're all in agreement, we've all waited, and this was the, this was the excuse, and I'll throw this up, this was the excuse and the pleasure. Oh, we're not worried about it, Tim, this is how we've run it for the last five years, we're banking on the grants. We can also have a couple of grants, they're done, they're over with, so let's get to work, let's have a work session, like you recommended at the beginning. I completely agree, let's have a work session as soon as possible, so that we can get to work for anything, so then the community can start moving on, on this. Topic, because it's becoming very young and very over, you know, the temperature's through the roof on it, and. I don't agree with having to have this tonight. Because I don't see what's gonna impact our time.
Well, I didn't need a motion, I, oh, yeah, Barb, that's just.
Before, before we can follow up with the motion, uh, uh, a couple of flaws, so, one, um. Engineering services is another of the maintenance line item for budgets, and it's under consulting, so they had, maintenance is still there, no one told them that, I was just a member. But we also talked about the funding laws, and whether the one you said, you know, line item or funding laws, it was available.
Right.
Um, to the other part. A, another flaw, maybe in, in making it more manageable, so these, those engineering services should provide, um, an invisible files. We can approve this for any portion of it, so if you're truly not comfortable going for the cover, because this includes, um. Fitting services, construction oversight, et cetera, maybe you're not ready to go on with that, but you'd like to see somebody up here still on Thursday. Um, I did fill out once again, there's recently, what if? This, you know, commission doesn't run forward, doesn't want to get all this approved, um, for approximately eleven thousand hours, we can get Evan Marsh and H E D up here. On Thursday, that's approximately what it would cost out of this thirty eight thousand, and to give that suffering back, and maybe at that point, we have more information. You can decide if you want to move forward, um, with the engineering services, with the project itself. I don't know if that's hopeful.
Well, the issues are evening. Is that helpful?
I like that.
Yeah.
I think it's very capitalized, it's a great solution, and we're still getting someone to look at solution, or look for solutions within a two day factor to give us direction. I, that won't happen if we don't go with Evan Marsh in two days, and, and Barb just gave us a, a good compromise. That they don't have to go through the full specs, or they can go through the device, and how, and spend the eleven thousand. A bargain, I guarantee you, with contractors, um, that's a bargain. And. And it makes sense.
Why don't we give a motion on this day, or then we can have discussion, so we know kind of what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how I would order this. Use this, Barb.
So Barb, what do you take?
If, Tom, can kind of tell me what it means more than this.
Look, look, can I ask, or is there not, maybe that'll help you more later today?
So what do you, so what do we get for the eleven thousand dollars? Well, what would that be?
That's what you get the, the two engineering firms, I'm saying.
Our emotion, H E D.
Right, to look at everything, they'll pull up words, they'll get eyes on everything down from that, and they will write us with a summary. Of what they will be, needs to be addressed, to get us up in our.
Will it be a standard engineer summary that, or kind of that?
If we don't have these specific plans and specs.
Right, but, if I may, that's true, but if that, that be done, no matter who you hire, whenever you hire.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I mean, someone has to do that initial search and analysis. And if we can do it in two days. And so my motion would be, yeah, right.
Let me. My, my.
Barb, are we just taking the recommendation that's up on the screen, and the commissions have basically straightened everything after assessments of the engineering bidding and private oversight? To strike that, so basically services for electrical assessment, turn them out not to exceed eleven thousand dollars in all price, would that work?
There's some, you want to make that motion, so we have it on the table, so we can, there's that. I'll make that motion as Mike was on the. The, so it's that.
Uh, so, so for that eleven thousand, it's not served by, um, now. Our emotion starts since two thousand and three, if we're gonna spend eleven thousand dollars, they're gonna give us a summary. And we do find another electrical engineer firm to do this for less amount of money. Um, with a stronger agreement, putting a cap to spend on that, will they even entertain that eleven thousand dollars you just spent? Or is this decision to spend this eleven thousand dollars to lock this into E T D and our lot? Because a third party or another electrical engineer firm is not gonna come in and give you like their summary, they're gonna say, if we're going in, you need our summary.
Is that a question?
Yes, yes.
So I can't answer for another half year, I believe that they would want to see the summary that we already have, and use that as a starting point. Would they probably still be wanting to lay out of themselves, but they would have a lot of base information to sell about, they would not be selling them for the. In our, I don't know, I think I can get our mentorship, um, but I don't know of any electrical engineers. Up here in this area that provide the service, I'm sure that there might be, I've talked to several of the electricians, none of them do that, they also did not say, oh, just call so and so. You know, right, I've talked to them on a regular basis, and I think that if there was an easy just call so and so, he would have told me that. You know, so, you know, that would be my concern in putting this out, I don't know who we're going to get, I know with Evan Marshall, they have to have H E D. Basically calling in a favor, hey, we have this file, how soon can you help us? You know, I don't even know if they're gonna answer my call. Very late, you know, and I'm wondering, because I just don't know, because I'm not here to deal with this right now.
Just one more clarification for the discussion, so I, I'm sorry, Tom, this gives us nothing, okay, and, 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 let me ask you it this way, Barb. Have you not had conversations with electrical contractors that have told you exactly what needs to be done, they need a stamp?
They have given me their opinions, and I, they're well respected electricians, um, they rock those engineered ones.
My point is, all we're going to, all we're gonna pay eleven thousand dollars for is an opinion, that's it. And that's what they're coming to give you, and, and, that's fine, you made the motion, I'm, I'm, I'm just, all I wanted to do is clarify that, all this is an opinion, we still don't have a stamp. Which is the main thing that we need, the scope of work is no one needs to be done, unfortunately. The product can't get here in time anyhow for some of which is a dire shame, um, so, it's what it is.
Okay. Barb, answer it.
So we don't know, so we know that if somebody actually orders some of these materials, that there's a lot of the, we don't know, there are some. Some electrical contractors that do just as tight a order, it is possible. That they have some of these materials, you know, we, we don't know, to get it out, we're gonna be around.
Agree with that, and I would agree. Barb, you, the, the eleven thousand. Will not give us an electrical plan, not for eleven thousand, I don't. Won't give us a stamp that need, but it'll certainly get us started in the right direction, and it's gonna be minded, I have to spend it.
Okay, why don't we call sort of, please? Jessica, will you call, please?
Lester.
Hi.
Demajah.
Hey.
Kappa.
Hi.
Louis.
Hey.
Ian.
Hi.
Bobby, Karen.
Thank you.
And, yeah, you want to set up for it. So, and we have the installation of strike, our load system. Or we did fifty one eighty two thousand.
Yes.
Consider the recommendation, E M S record channel not authorized. And he has four loads and installation from striker. That costs maybe nine thousand, four hundred eighty.
So as John's talked to us before, uh, they're moving to standardizing, uh, various ambulances with, uh, basically a power load, uh, system. Uh, we have that in some of our other units, we're looking to put it into fifty one L two, uh, we have a price to do that. Uh, John, you do information of, you know, the loads that they're trying to lift with regards to this. It'd be a long term investment in fifty one L two, it currently has seventy five thousand miles on it, uh, he thinks. Unit itself is good for another seventy five thousand miles, and then at that point, you probably move the box that would have a list to sit on it to a new chassis. So kind of the same way we do some of our stands still dumps, move them from truck to truck after the, the other mechanics wear out. So, um. And you think that's still a little factors off, so this would be a long term investment, this feature of equipment. Uh, we have striker equipment on our other, um, pieces of equipment both here and in Moyn Vale as well too, so it'll be consistent for all the, uh. Operators to use, uh, the cost for it is twenty seven thousand, three hundred eighty two dollars plus eighteen hundred dollars, uh, for installation. Uh, we do have the fund budgeted in the capital account for this improvement, and it is John's recommendation, which I support, that the commission authorized the purchase of our. Load system installed with striker at the cost of twenty nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. Yeah.
It might be kind of that, I'm always planning. I've worked with E M S, um, with E M S my entire career. Uh, with their first striker, that is amazing, I did not have to lift the. Two or three in one person in back of the truck, and just push it up, I have to, I'll have to, let's say you spill a lot of where it's air on. Older gentleman, they stopped them, they're great, in life.
Um, to, uh, what operation? Post board. Post board has been on the board.
Um, yeah, well, my other question was gonna be, because he's a little left. Uh, you know, as I, I, you know, I, my question wasn't valid, I, I understand that, my question was gonna be asked, as a physician in your position, and. And we're replacing you now, not they replaced you, we're replacing John, you know, is this something that, you know, maybe, maybe the new guy has a different, uh, different idea, I was, I was the question, but. You were speaking, I had that, I was like.
Yeah, do what you do, so.
I'll make a motion.
I think you're right, oh, that's what I said, oh, I'm sorry, you're, I, I thought you were first. Yeah. We never think of ourselves.
I'll make a motion for the situation to your operator, produce a, you have a power load installation with striker. And the dollar, point nine thousand, hundred eighty two dollars and nineteen cents.
So then, we're doing, is your question? Jessica.
Demajah.
Hi.
Kappa.
Hi.
Louis.
Hi.
Ian.
Hi.
Hi.
Bobby, Karen.
We're really bored.
Um, I don't really like to get work sessions lined up, I'm sorry. Um, now that the E E A grant is done, it's not through, that's what we've been reading on for months and months and months. Um, get something kind of close, so we start having a conversation, yeah.
Do you agree with that?
Um, no, I mean, my schedule is open, we, we, two weeks out, we started.
I do believe that people are so, so, I mean, it's, we should, I think it's really important for us to get together, to see if it makes sense through the.
I can look at the calendars, kind of like I did with regards to the next certain rental thing that we started going to, they itself, which we should consider calling it, it's kind of, I'd rather, yeah.
You should. Are we ready to make a decision on that, or is it gonna be like, or should?
I'm looking.
Um, oh, whoa. We said we're gonna pick it up on next month.
Yeah, so I go, Tuesday, your name is the twenty first, the twenty first.
The twenty first was bad for me. It, it, it does for me, but I could make the eighth work.
What, what do you know?
Get to the Tuesday, yeah, the twenty first is a Tuesday, and the eighth is the last day.
Twenty first, I'm right. There.
That's Tuesday, seven.
That is correct.
Yeah, which is down. And, so today's, uh.
Twenty first is the ten eighth of June.
And we have a meeting the next week, crap, we're meeting twenty eighth.
Yeah. Yeah, so. You're one. It was like, twenty first is the best. They're okay with it.
And, that's what I said, there you go.
Yeah, that's a little weird. If we develop a new, 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 or, because I have to do a whole, you know, session for, I have to be sure we have a memory, understanding of a piece. Between the, you know, sort of group. And I, I think that's really important, especially with it, because we started with the forward, and just to make sure. You know, that, uh, we all got on the same page, you know, the same, exactly, it was so much, because the one issue we had, rated by, signed by Mr. Far. Lawton Wilson, oh, slow, excuse me, and it's eight and three twelve nineteen seventy. So.
Yeah, my other question was when, uh, we had the presentation, it was a green folks, and that was discussed as a prior, and I, I thought they. I thought they were very, they were fully eager to present something to us, but I can find it and see where that is.
All right, then, if you can motion to, uh, to.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, man.
If I could request the city commission a big motion with appearance to, uh, setting the term for next short term rental meeting for Tuesday, June first and five thirty P M.
I'll make a motion.
Wait, wait, any motion, we have a consensus.
Cause we're making, whenever we set up a special meeting, we try and have a motion.
Like that. What's the paper say, I?
I, I.
Those votes?
I'll make a motion here, here.
Say.